Welcome to the Brevard County Commission Meeting on this, the 25th day of April, which makes it the 115th day of the year. Time flies. Which means we have exactly 250 days left in the year 2017. And you might be curious to know that on April 25th in 1875, New York City received three inches of measurable rainfall, which was the latest date and still is the latest date they've ever had a measurable amount of snow. So I just figured you guys would like some useless information to start your day. Also on this date, Bell Labs unveiled the very first solar panel, which also had a battery connected. Anybody want to guess what year that might have been? Solar panels, you know, it's all the rage now. Way back in 1954. So we've come a long way. 63 years ago that Mr. Barfield was born. And that year was 1954. And that is your useless information for the day. So that'll start our day with a little levity. I'll call this meeting to order. We have our invocation by Pastor Ken Delgado. Would you like to introduce him?
This is Ken Delgado, and he is the pastor for the House of Palm Bay. Welcome. Thank you so much for coming.
Please stand.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, thank you for this opportunity and thank you for asking me to be here. The invocation this morning, I brought it out of what James Madison wrote in 1787 about Dr. Benjamin Franklin when he said this. He said, "In the contest with Great Britain, we had daily prayers in this room for divine protection. Our prayers, sir, were heard and graciously answered. And have we now forgotten that powerful friend? Or do we imagine we no longer need his assistance?" And so it's based on that thought. So we join our hearts together. Heavenly Creator, just the reality of the fruitless efforts of mankind to solve the world's ailments is always before us. And yet I can see how one simple revelation of the power of a peanut that you gave to George Washington Carver upon his simple question of why you created a peanut saved the whole of the economy of the southern United States. So today, on behalf of our governmental ministers that we have here, of our county commissioners, I have three simple requests. Give them your wisdom and revelation in the affairs of Brevard County. Keep ever before them the image of Jesus washing His disciples' feet, saying, "I have come to serve and not to be served." Let them continually be reminded of the lost art of spending less of what one receives, putting a little away for certain rainy days, and avoid borrowing like it was a plague. I pray this in the authority of Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and consider Republic for which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I need a motion for approval of minutes for the April 6th, 2017 zoning meeting and March 7th, 2017 regular meeting minutes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Anyone wish to vote no? Passes 5-0. We'll go into resolutions. First resolution will be from Mrs. Nordy.
And I didn't see Loretta. Is Loretta Dozier here?
I have a spot there. I'm one of the members.
Please, can you come up and introduce yourself?
You want to just, you just want to wait until we finish the others and maybe she'll show? Okay, sure. We can do that.
Okay. We'll move on to the next one. Cindy Short and Phil Keschlein.
Hi, good morning, Commissioners. We're here with the Commission on Aging, and we would like to recognize Older Americans' Month for the month of May. In honor of Older Americans' Month, their theme is Age Out Loud this year. And the Commission on Aging wants to recognize one of their members as being a senior in the community who is aging out loud, and his name is Phil Keschlein.
I appreciate that. Thank you, and thank you, Phil, very much. Older Americans' Month proclamation. Whereas it is the desire of the Brevard County Board of County Commissioners to celebrate the contributions of our older citizens in the strengthening and prosperity of Brevard County, and whereas Brevard County represents the seventh largest elder population in Florida, and approximately 45% of Brevard County's total population is 50 years of age or older. And whereas the Brevard County Board of County Commissioners believes that it is older citizens are a diverse and treasured link to our heritage and joins citizens across the United States in the promotion of the Older Americans' Month national theme of Age Out Loud, giving aging a new voice. And whereas, in keeping with this national theme, recognizes Phil Keschlein as an advocate for seniors in Brevard County, engaging with the community as a district coordinator for AARP since 2006, and as a member of the Brevard Commission on Aging Board since 2010. And whereas, Phil Keschlein has promoted and educated our community about the AARP Driver Safety Program, designed to help older drivers maintain their mobility and safe driving skills while sustaining their independence. And whereas, Phil Keschlein continues to give aging a new voice by guiding communities such as Satellite Beach and becoming age-friendly communities. And whereas, the Brevard Commission on Aging, together with the Brevard County Board of County Commissioners, wishes to thank Phil Keschlein for a job well done advocating for seniors and for using every opportunity to raise awareness about important issues facing our seniors. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, does hereby proclaim May 2017 as Older Americans' Month. Done, ordered, and adopted in regular session this 25th day of April AD 2017.
Have a motion?
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Anyone wish to vote no? Passes 5-0. Congratulations.
Thank you. I clearly am not used to being on this side of an award or anything like this, so I'm very humbled by what is happening here. But again, as you read, most of everything I do is towards seniors and trying to help. We have an unusual problem in this county that my expression is like a freight train coming at us very, very rapidly. We're going to see more and more seniors not only moving into the area, but more and more also are having the problem that they're running out of their own income, and there's the same token, they are just generally are not anticipating the amount of costs that are involved as each year goes by, whether it be for assisted living or whatever it might be. We just have a major problem in this county. I really am really pressing to make sure that you people do not remove any money from the existing system for seniors this coming year. It's a very, very difficult time. It's, I know you're limited in what you have to do, but please do not cut it. It'd be preferred you find more, but I know that's unlikely. But make sure that you can do all that you can for seniors, because as I say, this is that freight train. Right now, it's only 25% of the population is over 65, and if you pay much attention to what's going on beyond that, or look at your statistics, FDOT is telling us that in 40 years, 65% of the people that are on the roadway are going to be over 65 years old. And that I'm glad I'm not going to be around to see, but the fact is, it's what's coming at us. So as I say, please do not make any cuts on this, because frankly, the recovery and the problem you're facing with the years ahead is going to be tremendous, so it's necessary. I, of course, will put a special word in for aging matters, not just because of meals on wheels, but because what it also does. It allows that someone goes to the door, knocks on it, and makes sure that somebody answers, and many times, if they need help, help is gotten for them, which is, if we didn't have that type of service around here, you'd have a bigger problem with expenses and costs against even the county itself. So it's very important, plus the fact that at least getting nourishment one day a week. And for that, I thank you very much, and I appreciate the honor.
Thank you, sir.
Do you want a cough drop?
I need one. I know where to go. Now, for all you folks wondering why all these good-looking young kids up here are wearing red and white and fancy hats, they're here because they represent Sea Park Elementary. And the meetings, excuse me, the Meeting of the Mind group. So if all you kids and whoever else wants to come up here, and someone wants to give us a little speech as to why you're all here, I'm sure every... Good morning.
Thank you very much for having us here today. We appreciate it. We appreciate Commissioner Smith and your staff for doing this. Our team, Odyssey of the Mind, competed in a tournament on April 8th, the Florida State Tournament, and they came in first in their division. And what's unique about it is the second year in a row they came in first. And they also received two awards at the district and at the state tournament, or not for future, and Ms. Bloom will discuss that in a second. Now, Odyssey of the Mind is the world's largest problem-solving competition for kids from primary all the way up through college. And it's been going on for about 38 years now. This is going to be the 38th annual one. They're going to go to a world competition in East Lansing, Michigan State University, May 23rd through 28th, competing against teams from China, Singapore, Japan, Americas, Europe, Russia maybe too, Poland. So this is quite an honor and quite an adventure for these kids to go to. It's the second year they've gone to world. Now, Odyssey of the Mind was originally called Olympics of the Mind, so you can imagine what Olympics that connotation means. But it was changed Odyssey of the Mind a few years ago, and they have to create a, they have to solve a problem. Now, their problem that they had to do was based on time travel. They created a performance about time travelers going back in time to learn the inspiration behind great works of art. Now, the kicker of it was, one of those artists has to be in our future, so they had to create a future artist and a future work of art. We'll let them explain what they did, but they based their problem on the Willy Wonka theme, which was pretty amazing. And the judges, they had some of the judges actually crying. That's how good they did. So without further ado, we'll introduce.
Yeah, well, I want to brag a little bit.
Okay.
This team earned the Renata Fusca Award, which is the highest award that Odyssey of the Mind gives to teams. Some years, they don't even give it at all. This group, they got it two times. That's how special they were. And like you said, the judges were crying. There are also, how they described it is, when they gave them the award the first time, is there are judges there for 30 years who have never seen things that these kids have done. Their costumes were organic from top to bottom, their sets organic, top to bottom. In the staging, the beginning area, they had so much pizzazz and so much excitement that the enthusiasm went on and on right through their eight-minute skit, and then they had a 20-minute interview afterwards with the judges. So they were extremely impressed, and they have a super amazing show. And so I would like them to at least tell what they've done, because they've worked very, very hard weekends over the entire Christmas break, over spring break. They just, they deserve every bit of this. Thank you very much.
Sure.
Lauren.
Go ahead and say your name, grade, and tell us.
Hi, my name is Lauren Williams, and I'm in fifth grade. I'm 11 years old, and in the skit, I play Omar Wonka, a mix between Willy Wonka and the Odyssey of the Mind mascot, Omar. So one of the criterias was to create a costume, an Omar costume, which is a raccoon, out of a creative material. So I chose plastic Walmart bags that were cut, tied, and glued together around costume. I have a shirt like this, but I have pants in my tail. And I have hats to go with each scene. I have a pizza hat for Italy, a newspaper hat for China, a bleak, bland, and blue hat for the factory, and this is my candy hat for Willy Wonka's factory. It's like 20 pounds of candy right here.
20 pounds?
It's a lot. So another one of the criterias was to create three works of art, one in our future, and then two in the past. So we chose Leonardo da Vinci, the Mona Lisa, and then Chen Hongxu, which is the plum blossom and wild bird painting. So I created the Mona Lisa. And I used great art, and I graded a poster that I had, and then I graded a piece of white paper, and I copied each grid. And it took over 60 hours and a lot of tears. So that's, yeah.
Would you turn, would you turn your picture around so they can see it?
Yeah.
I'll hold this. I love who you are and what you do and what your name is.
I'm Sarah. I'm in fourth grade, and I'm 10 years old. I am Charlie Bucket List. I created a costume with old jeans. Charlie Bucket List is one of the kids that got a golden ticket. There's also Veruca, and that's Veruca Saltine. I'm Charlie Bucket List. I created a costume out of jeans, and I have two pants. It's, I cut the top pocket out of old jeans, and I put it on the top of the costume, and then I have old jeans for my shorts. And I sew them together and hot glued them together and made straps, and I made a burlap bag, and yeah.
All right.
I'm Sophie Bailey. I'm 10 years old and in fifth grade. In this skit, I play the Oompa Zoompa, which is like, like an Oompa Loompa, but better. And I kind of help move the story along when they're traveling from each scene to the next. By moving the story along, I sing a little song. Can I sing one of them for you?
Sure.
Okay. This, it makes a little more sense in the skit, but okay. Oompa Zoompa Dumpty Duh. Back in time to save the future. Oompa Zoompa Dumpty Dee. They will learn about creativity.
Sophie, Sophie, would you like to hold up your trophy so we can see it?
That one, right there. This one right here.
Hold it up so they can see it.
My name is Victoria McDyne, and I play Leonardo da Vinci in the skit. And so my costume has, my hat is made out of a paper plate turned into a beret with yarn hair and pasta on it. And so this is my jacket, and so I just couldn't figure out which tie to wear, so I just wore all of them.
I'm Lana Stout, and I'm in fifth grade. I play Veruca Saltine in the skit. At first, I'm really bratty and annoyed, because I really want to be the center of attention, and then when I get to Willy Wonka's factory, I'm inspired by all the color. My skirt is made out of folded sugar daddies, because my character says, "I want my sugar daddy" a lot.
I am Kate Bloom. I am in fifth grade, and I am the future artist, Crayola Von Snickers. And I'm called that because I do this throughout the whole thing. And I created this. It took me multiple months. I did the same method as the Mona Lisa, and it's the plum blossom. It's made out of colored pencil. And I'm the future artist, so I created the, like I, this, it's made out of crayon shavings and candy, obviously. And yeah, I'm pretty much, I put, this comes out of a teacup, and it's a pop creativa tea.
Turn around and show it to everybody.
I'm Eva Bradley. I'm in fourth grade, and I'm 10 years old. In the play, I am Hongxu, who is the Chinese artist from the past. My costume is just about strictly from Goodwill. It's a hoodie and old pants with, I cut up a rug to make a stomach, and I covered the top part of the hoodie with it, and it made it look like a panda onesie. I used two pieces of felt to make ears and a little panda face. So, not much. Oh, I guess I should sing the song I sing when I come onto this thing. Can you see it?
Sure.
She said, "Oh, como esta?" She said, "Konichiwa." She said, "Pardon my French." I said, "Bajou, madame." That's all. Whenever I come on, I'm wearing a really cool boat, which is made from just scraps of cardboard and folded Chinese takeout menus. I can't think.
A boat?
Yes.
Like a boat that floats?
Yep.
All righty.
Yeah, cardboard, and it's like, lights on my shoulders, so.
Very cool.
It's really something amazing to watch. Their overall creativity, it's exciting. It's eight minutes of excitement. They will be doing a performance at Sea Park Elementary, and we're calling it our VIP reception. Of course, I have golden tickets for all of you that we'll be giving you. It will be on May 16th at 6:30, and we hope to see all of you there, and we appreciate it. Thank you very much.
I have a question for you before I read this. You said it was the second year that you, I have written here that it's the third consecutive year that you won first place in the regionals.
Yes, in the, we've been first three times in Brevard.
And then the second year, we won at state, the entire Florida state.
And there's another aspect to the competition, as well as the spontaneous, where they go in and they're given a question, and they have to answer really quick. And when they do that, they have peppermint hats on, so that was part of, and that's what those hats are, those red and white things.
Got it.
Thank you very much.
Okay, let me read this. Did you, want to say something else?
Yeah, just one more thing. Just want to thank you Commissioners for this resolution here today, and just want to know that they are going to world to represent Brevard County and also the state of Florida, and we're all proud of them.
Yes.
Okay, well, I got a whole page here, so I hope I have enough breath. Whereas Odyssey of the Mind is the world's largest creative problem-solving educational competition for students, and whereas the Sea Park Elementary School Odyssey of the Mind team won first place at the regional level for the third consecutive year, and on April 8th, 2017, the girls won first place in the Florida State Tournament for the second year in a row. The team of seven girls was also awarded the highest honor for creativity, the Renata Fusca Award at both the regional and the state tournaments. And whereas, the Sea Park Elementary team includes students Lauren Williams, Kate Bloom, Lana Stout, Sophie Bailey, Sarah Miller, Eva Bradley, and Victoria McDyne. Head coach is Sea Park teacher Catherine Bloom. Parent coaches are Ken and Sophie Williams. Sea Park Elementary principal is Ina Leiba. And whereas, Sea Park team's problem involved the classics, "It's Time." The future and the past collided in this problem about important works of art, both existing and yet to be created. The team created an original performance about time travelers looking to discover the inspiration for great works of art. And whereas, the team worked after school and on weekends in a relentless effort to produce sets made from recycled materials such as playing cards and chopsticks. That's pretty creative in itself. The team's creativity and outside-the-box thinking were demonstrated through a China scene made entirely from materials from a Chinese restaurant, and an Italy scene made out of pasta. They also spent hundreds of hours replicating the Mona Lisa and a painting from the Chinese artist Chen Hongxu. They even invented a working time machine. It was working, huh? That mimicked a traditional gumball machine, having a gumball come out at the end of each time the travel scene ended. And whereas, the girls' costumes were just as organic as their sets, one costume was a raccoon made of strips of Walmart bags from head to toe, a future artist made entirely out of crayons and crayon boxes, and an artist's cloak made completely out of neckties. Whereas, the Sea Park Elementary School Odyssey of the Mind team will advance to the Odyssey of the Mind World Finals competition at Michigan State University on May 23rd and 28th, to 28th, where they will continue to proudly represent their Space Coast community in the state of Florida, and my district four, I might add. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, does hereby congratulate the Sea Park Elementary School Odyssey of the Mind team for their exceptional creative problem-solving skills, and wishes them success at the Odyssey of the Mind World Finals. Done, ordered, and adopted in regular session this 25th day of April 2017. I so move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Anyone wish to vote no? It passes unanimously, 5-0. Congratulations, guys. Congratulations. Oh, okay, great. I'll be there. I hope I'm here to be there. What, 23rd?
Uh, 16th, May 16th. Yes. If you could share those.
Thank you. Congratulations. You've done a wonderful work.
(singing) If you want to change the world, there's nothing to it.
Congratulations.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you again, Sea Park Elementary.
Thank you, sir.
And we're going to go off script here a little bit.
As all of you know, Stockton is going on to bigger and better places. So, we thought, he didn't want any big fanfare, so we thought, well, we'll get him a plaque anyway. And the plaque says, "Presented to Stockton Witten, Board County Manager, with deep appreciation for distinguished and unselfish service given to our county while serving with outstanding leadership ability."
Sheriff?
Yes, sir. Yeah, Stockton, if you would just stay with us. First of all, thank you for having us this morning, Stockton. We wanted to let you know on behalf of the 1,500 proud men and women of the Brevard County Sheriff's Office, how much you have meant to us. What an incredible leader you have been, not only for, for the county, but in helping us do our mission to protect this community. So, we're on a very tight budget at the sheriff's office, so we didn't have money to get you a plaque. So, our team's going to give you a hug. (laughter) Yeah, one at a time. So, actually, we have a plaque for you. And if you'll just permit us, a great appreciation of our friend Stockton Witten, County Manager. On behalf of the 1,500 proud men and women of the Brevard County Sheriff's Office, we honor and recognize you for everything you've done for our agency and community. We have valued your partnership throughout the 22 years of service and want to thank you for your remarkable dedication and leadership.
Okay, now we'll go back to our resolutions. Commissioner Isnardi.
Go ahead.
Good morning to the commissioners. Good morning. We have with us Pastor Evio Strander from the Mission Church. We also have Margaret Irwin from the Mission Church as well. She's a co-coordinator of the National Day of Prayer Observances here in Brevard County and some of them. But I, I'm representing Dove Bible Club. And Dove Bible Club is an after-school Bible club that teaches character education based on the life of Jesus Christ. We're currently in 27 elementary schools throughout Brevard County. We go all the way from Port St. John to Merritt Island to South Area Palm Bay, all of the elementary schools in Palm Bay, we have Bible clubs. And we minister or share the gospel of Jesus Christ with over 700 students a month. So, it's a blessing that the students love it, the teachers love it, the parents love it, and we love it. So, it's a blessing to do that. But what we've also done was we've, we've organized different prayer rallies or prayer observances this month, this year for the National Day of Prayer, which is May 4th. We have, Sister Margaret and I, in our church, we have organized nine different prayer rallies in different city halls, Rockledge City Hall and Indian Harbor Beach. We have one even in Indian River County. We have West Melbourne Veterans Memorial Complex. We have the Viera County Commissioners Chambers, Rockledge City Hall, Port St. John Community Center, Satellite Beach City Hall, Indian Harbor Beach City Hall. And we have two churches that are holding different prayer rallies as well. So, we just want to say thank you. Thank you, sir, Commissioner, County, County Manager Witten. Thank you, Commissioner Isnardi. Thank you, Commissioner Pritchett. Thank you, Commissioner Smith. Thank you, Commissioner Barfield. Thank you, Commissioner Tobia. And thank you, sir, as the county attorney. Thank you for what you do and your service to our, our nation and our country and our city. There is a blessing, I would like to read over you as you declare this day, you present this resolution today, declaring Brevard County recognizing May 4th as the National Day of Prayer. And it says here is this blessing, "When it goeth well with the righteous, the city rejoiceth. By the blessing of the upright, the city is exalted." Proverbs 11, 10 and 11. So, we thank you and we say, "God bless you." Oh, we're so proud of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all so much for what you do in the community. Resolution, whereas civic prayers and national days of prayer have a long and significant history in our constitutional republic dating back to the first Continental Congress in 1775. And whereas the Supreme Court has affirmed the right of state legislators to open their sessions with prayer, and the Supreme Court and the US Congress themselves begin each day with prayer. And whereas in 1988, legislation setting aside the first Thursday in May each year as a national day of prayer was passed unanimously by both houses of Congress and signed by President Ronald Reagan. And whereas the national day of prayer transcends differences, bringing together citizens of all faith, socioeconomic, ethnic, and political backgrounds to seek refuge, demonstrate gratitude, discover peace, and express their hopes through prayer. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida does hereby proclaim Thursday, May 4th, 2017 to be designated as a day of prayer in Brevard County, and encourage the citizens of Brevard County to observe the day in ways appropriate to its importance and significance. Done, ordered and adopted in regular session this 25th day of April, 2017. Thank you. I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve and a second. Anyone wish to vote no? Passes unanimously, 5-0. Congratulations. Okay, now we'll move into our consent agenda. Mr. Witten?
Mr. Chairman, I have two, two items. On 2A5, which is the extension of Crowder Gulf, an Ashbrook contract for disaster recovery debris removal, we would ask that if the board approves that, that out, that it also include approval of the chairman's signature on all related documents. And on item 2C2, which is the request for qualifications and to negotiate for replacement of the ELC, we would request that we be allowed to remove that from the agenda.
Duly noted. Anyone else have any other comments or anything that they would like to pull? Commissioner Tobia?
Thank you. I'd like to pull 2B3, 2C3, and 2D1.
2, 2D?
2D1, please.
Anyone else? Okay, can I have a motion to accept the agenda minus 2B3, 2C3, and 2D1? And include the request by Mr. Witten on 2A5 and 2C2?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Pritchett and Commissioner Barfield seconds. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, Mr. Tobia, 2B3.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is just a contract concerning meals at, at park facilities. The county sees a revenue of $8,540, but there's no expense associated with staff time on this, and I have no idea what that potentially would be. The response I got from staff was if staff was not providing this, they would be doing something else. So, a follow-up would be what services will be left untended because this, this service will be provided. So, I just wanted a little more clarification based on that, Mr. Chair.
Is there anyone on staff that can give us any more information on that?
Yes, sir. Mary Ellen Donner, Director Parks and Recreation. The program actually provides approximately 20,000 breakfasts and lunches. The expected revenue, yeah, it's actually filtered back in to pay for the partial staff time. It's permanent part-time or permanent full-time that provide this service. It's not something that had been tracked in the past. And if it's the board's desire that we track that for this coming summer, that's not a problem. But the, that delta is actually put back into staff and does pay for the, the minor staff time that, that this program administers.
Well, Mr. Tobia?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I, I don't think it's mismanagement. I would hate to think that Brevard County would make any money off of providing food for, for children and, and they can't afford it. And you mentioned, we don't know what that is, so potentially, from what you're telling me, it could be less money than that $8,500. And, you know, I, I'd like to see, you know, what that delta is because it could be both positive and negative. And, and also, you know, as we move forward, certainly know what services will be left open because these services are provided.
We will certainly track that this summer, sir.
Okay, so, 2B3. Can we have a motion to accept that?
So moved.
We have a motion by Commissioner Barfield. Do we have a second? Have a second by Commissioner Pritchett. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes 5-0. Mr. Tobia, 2C3?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a contract allowing for some space in county facilities. It looks like it's 120 feet, but during meetings, HHS, Mr. Golden, I believe, had provided that the facilities that they had at their disposal, disposal were actually insufficient for the services provided. So, in fact, the county is spending $7,000 or $8,000 going to a paperless system in order to save space. So, my question is, is with a lack of space, is this a wise move to, to provide this voluntary service to, to, to this organization?
You have the floor, Tracy.
The, the space that is, for the proposed lease is for an office in the health departments in Titusville and here in Viera. Those buildings are operated by the health department and it is in the best interest they feel to have that outpatient referral service available in the health department for their clients.
And so, when, when Mr. Golden answered the question, he was talking about county controlled space. Just so happens that when the health department builds space and acquires space, it then becomes ownership of the county but operated by the health department. And so, Mr. Golden would have been referring to the space that's under the control and operations of Brevard County Board of County Commissioners.
Thank you, Mr. Witten. Anyone else have any comments? So, do I have a motion to accept 2C3?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Pritchett to accept this motion. Commissioner Barfield seconds. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Mr. Tobia votes no. It passes 4-1. 2D1, Mr. Tobia.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is the last one here. These are budget change requests and there are a few of them. First of all, there is an $18,000 request here to replace, it looks like, two boat motors. So, the questions on that one would be twofold. Knowing that we have-
What number is that one?
Sorry.
2D1.
2D1.
I know, but which, where? There's so many of them. Look at fund number, that's the best way to track it.
Okay, yeah, I, I don't have that off. I'm sorry, I did not delineate that. You're right, there were a bunch of them. It's for $18,000.
Commissioner, I believe the, the particular BCR you're referencing is 2017-0398. If you look at the bottom of each BCR, on the right-hand section, there is a number. And so, this is for Natural Resources. They requested an increase from the general fund for the replacement of the boat motors.
And so, just to continue, my questions were twofold on this one. Knowing that the boat motors were 23 years old, was that budgeted for this past year when they were 22 years old? And second of all, looking at what these boats were doing, it was measuring muck. I mean, it looked like it hit a lot of the potential lagoon funds. Is that a possibility that we could use these resources, the lagoon fund resources for the replacement of these motors?
The request to replace those motors has occurred multiple years over the last decade or so. In this current year's adopted budget, it's actually included on the list of unfunded budget requests. So, we were hopeful that the, the mid-year supplement would be an opportunity to get this done. Regarding your second question on would it be appropriate to use the new trust fund from the Sehar Lagoon voter-approved referendum? The, the intent of that referendum was to fund new and additional work, not to replace dollars that would have been budgeted or programs that would have been budgeted some other way. So, obviously, we've had this boat for several decades doing all sorts of projects related to waterway marker, artificial reefs out in the Atlantic Ocean. And so, while it's definitely the board's authority to consider shifting this cost to that trust fund, I encourage you to think about, you know, is, is this a, is this a shift of a program cost that would have been covered some other way were it not for the new presence of a lagoon trust fund?
So, first of all, it's, we're talking not about new boats, we're talking about new motors. Is that correct?
Correct.
And it looks like the board, far before I ever got here, has made the determination that there isn't a pressing need to, to do this. We've gone through the exercise and it looks as though that prior boards have said, "No, this is not-" this is not a wise use of tax dollars, or they've certainly prioritized that in a different way. So, with those two factors, A, it being a new motor, and B, or two new motors, and B, you know, looking with the purposes that I got from the boat, it looked like it aligned pretty darn closely with monitoring the muck removal, I think was the number-one reason that I got out of your office. It seems like that there's a pretty darn close alignment with that $18,000.
I would like to chime in here. I disagree. I don't think the money should come out of the lagoon fund. The people that voted for the lagoon fund voted to specifically target the monies raised for improving the Indian River Lagoon. These motors will obviously be part of that, but they will also be involved in many other things that the county does with regard to natural resources. And given that the last motor's lasted, however, 23 years?
Yes.
The lagoon fund is only 10 years, and the plan is only 10 years, so these motors are going to be used for a lot longer than the 10 years of the lagoon fund, so therefore, they're going to be used for other things than just the lagoon fund. So, I would suggest that they be spent, and the money be spent, out of county rather than the lagoon fund.
Mr. Chair, would you like me to move on to, you know, another one of these and handle it all together? What is your purview?
Sure. Commissioner Pritchett, you have the floor.
What's the value of these boats? Are they, were they of new motors?
I'm not sure of the current value of the boat, but it's an old hull, but it's a very functional hull. The motors, we have been, it's spending more and more each year on repair, and they're old, two-stroke engines. The industry, the marine industry, has moved towards the cleaner, quieter, more efficient four-stroke engines, and there are fewer and fewer mechanics out there that even know how to repair and keep these engines going. And so, those repair costs continue to escalate, and at this point, we have not been able to find anyone who can get these, can re-bore that, those engines, to get the boat up on a plane. So, we are now doing all of the work that we have on the water using a boat that can't go fast enough to get up onto a plane.
Okay, so the boat's going to be with us for a while?
Right, as long as we continue to take care of the hull, I think the fiberglass hull is in reasonable condition.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Barfield?
Yes, Commissioner Tobias, we've got to be careful that we don't do what Amendment 1 dollars did in Tallahassee, which was shift a lot of dollars around to different places and different locations. If you look on here, it also says for derelict vessel removal, artificial reef projects, waterway marker maintenance, that is nothing that falls in the purview of the lagoon tax. And I would be very upset to have to tell our citizens that we were going to play a bait and switch like happened in Tallahassee.
Mrs. Nardi?
I guess that the question should be is what is the percentage, I mean, obviously, a best guesstimate of the percentage of the workload on the boat's motors that's geared towards lagoon projects? Because maybe there's somewhere in the middle, you know, if you can guesstimate how much, I guess, wear usage would be used for lagoon projects in relation to the boats.
Right, that's an excellent question, but of course, it's, my answer is based on conjecture since we're just starting with the lagoon project, and a lot of that will determine on where, where the muck dredging projects are and where the separation of the solids from the water takes place. So, for the most part, that will be on land, and we'll be driving to those with cars. It's when they're on islands where we can only get to them by boat that we would need a boat to supervise that work, whereas the channel marker work requires a boat every time, the offshore work requires a boat every time. So, it may be a fairly small percentage of the effort related to muck dredging.
I would also point out that with these motors not capable of getting these boats up on plane, you can imagine, if you're a boater, how slow these boats have to travel. Well, instead of zipping from here to there, we're paying our employees to go putt-putt-putt-putt. So, there's going to be a return on investment because we're going to be more productive with our employees being able to cover a lot more area. To answer your question, Mr. Tobias, let's have a vote on 2D1. So, all those in favor of including 2D1 in this agenda, I would, I need a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'm confused. Does he have other ones?
Well, he only mentioned three, 2B3, 2C3, and now we're on 2D1.
Sorry, Mr. Chair. There were three, there were, I guess there are two. There's $18,000 in natural resources, and then $390,000 in facility management that's been broken down into $130,000 for some parking spaces, and then another $260,000 for parking spaces. So, there's two more parts for 2D1. If you wanted to handle them cumulatively or individually-
Yeah, let's do it cumulatively.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair. We've got a reflecting pond out on the other side of the building. It looks as though that we'd like to use $130,000 to level or fill in this one for added parking, and you charge us, again, with fine resources that can be used to help with our infrastructure. And I understand that there's $10,000 of annual maintenance on that reflecting pond. There are people out there working in, and certainly chemicals that needed to be to keep it the way it is. So, seeing as there's parking on the other side of the structure, and my office overlooks that, and there's parking that is usually available on the other side, would it be cost, would it make a lot more sense feasibly just to empty out the water? And I'm sure that would save quite, it would save our $10,000 a year annually, and while it wouldn't provide the, while it wouldn't provide the additional 25 spaces, it would save us more than $100,000, I'd imagine.
So, what would your proposal be? Have an empty hole in the ground?
And use the $100,000 to recover some roads. That would be my, that would be my suggestion, and I believe that a functional infrastructure is much more important than aesthetics at the county building.
Mr. Whitten, refresh my memory. I had a conversation with Lisa Cullen, and she said that she was returning, I don't remember how many million dollars, to the county fund, and the parking that is needed out there is for her office. Is that not correct?
Yeah, we love the tax collector because every year she returns about $4 to $5 million to the Board of County Commissioners. And so, this project goes a little bit beyond aesthetics in that it is actually converting what was a reclaimed pond for gray water. I know that's not the right term, Jim, but that's a term that I have on my head. So, it was, it's no longer needed, we no longer pump the reclaimed water into there. And so, this project would convert those, that space into parking spaces, because one of the things that we've added to this multi-service complex over the years is the tax collector's function. And so, for all of those customers into Building A and in the other buildings, this would allow them additional parking spaces, which we believe is needed, but also would allow them better access to the services that they're coming to the center for. So, again, a little bit beyond aesthetics, parking spaces. I think the plan is to add about 50 parking spaces. John, if you remember, somewhere on the, a number of 50 parking spaces, and so, that's obviously valuable to the customers visiting the complex.
Thank you, Mr. Whitten.
Yeah, thank you. First of all, I got from staff 25, so that works out to, you know, my math is not so good, but about $5,000 a parking space. I'd like to know if we looked at, is there anywhere else that we potentially could build parking spaces less than $5,000 a parking space? And I think we may have a misunderstanding about the intent or statutory requirements, but it's my belief that the tax collector returns $4 or $5 million to county budget because that office is statutorily required to do so. In fact, that's a function of her office. So, it's not as though that it's a quid pro quo, or she does it out of the goodness of her heart, and I don't want to, I greatly appreciate what she does, but just to be very clear, that is not a goodwill gesture from that office, as was implied.
Wasn't implied by me, sir. And she does have a statutory obligation to return all unused funds. She could, she could obviously spend more, and so, she does a good job in managing her budget, but I certainly wasn't implying that because she's been returning for the last eight years 4.5 million. We decided to gift her with a parking lot.
No, and I mentioned it because she had approached me about parking and the lack of parking out there. The parking lot is outside my office window as well, and I know, prior to her setting up shop there in Building A, Building A, isn't it?
Yes.
Yes, Building A. Parking was not a premium around the reflecting pond, and now it is. And so, I'm guessing people are parking on the other side and/or walking across the street. So, it would be a lot more convenient for our citizens to just park right outside our office and go in and do their business. So, that's why that's in there.
One more, one more question. Mr. Whitten mentioned that there would be 25 parking spaces, approximately, I believe, is what he said. I, my, I came up, you said 50, I'm sorry. I said 25, I apologize. Can we get a, can we find out whether it is 50, as Mr. Whitten implied, or 25, as what I came up with? Because that's quite a big difference there.
Mr. Denninghoff is on it.
Commissioners, the plan that we have developed will yield us about, between 50 and 60 additional parking spaces around the, in the reflecting pond area as compared to what is there today. I wanted to double-check on that because my recollection, we had three or four different plans where we were trying to optimize the thing, and I wanted to make sure which one was the one we finally landed on.
Thank you, Mr. Denninghoff.
Thank you. And thank you for clarifying that. I will say, Stockton, I apologize, but I'm very concerned about the material that you have provided as a county manager. I'm reading what, I, replacing the reflecting pond with approximately 25 parking spaces. This is the information that was provided to the county commission. So, I'm very concerned that you have information that is different than that that was provided to the county commission. Is there a way that you can explain why we received one document and you have, you're privy to another one?
Yeah, and I, and obviously, I missed that on the write-up of this because the 25 probably is the verse, first version of the, of the plan. And as John said, it'll be between 50 and 60, and it may ultimately, after they get in there and they design the thing in its final form, maybe somewhere less than 50. And so, that was just simply an error that noted the first rendition of the, of the design, but Mr. Denninghoff has not completely designed it, and obviously, he wouldn't do that until the board approved this. But the plan is, and they think that they can get between 50 and 60, but again, based on what they see when they get out there and start designing, it may be a different number, but it's approximately 50.
Any other comments? Anyone else on the board have any comments? Okay, so this would be 2D1, and it would include both those items.
I got, I have one more, Mr. Chair.
Oh, there's one more? Okay, go ahead.
This is, this is dealing with parking spaces too, so, Mr. Whitten, if you have more information that was not provided to the county commission that may cause us to go another way, I appreciate you to chime in that the information provided to us was incorrect. But there's $260,000 for some more parking, and that would be at the Palm Bay County Service Complex, which happens to be in, I believe, County Commission District 3. And it was, you know, there's parking available, except it's dirt parking, so this is quite a bit of money, $260,000. Again, more than two miles that could be recovered, or approximately a half mile that could be reconstructed. So, with there being parking there already that is covered, this is just an ancillary lot, I would suggest that that $260,000 could, could better be used for other infrastructure costs instead of covering a lot that already has access. So, and I'm sorry, I don't have the fund number on that one, but it's a $260,000 appropriation for the Palm Bay County Service Complex asphalt parking lot.
And that one is in the same budget change request as the, as the parking lot out here. And so, the Palm Bay Service Center is that facility that houses both the clerk of the court, the property appraiser, and tax collector, and the supervisor of election. And so, as we develop this, the ask was to convert the dirt parking lot into an asphalt parking lot. I think the primary concern is, the primary concerns are twofold, that as people come for voting and other services, sometimes, a lot of times, they utilize the dirt parking lot, and that's caused a lot of slip and falls inside the building. So, it was, one, a safety concern, but also with regards to the supervisor of elections, and I know I'm putting words in her mouth, but my conversations with her have been access to the voting precinct that is there, our early voting. And so, her concern was that as people come in to vote, and the first lot gets filled up, that people may have a concern with their access to, or their ability to access their voting precinct or early voting. And so, the second concern is to just simply make sure that there are no claims with regards to not having enough parking to access primarily the supervisor services, but all of the services that are housed in that location.
Thank you, thank you for that explanation, and you're, I've driven by it many times, and you're absolutely correct. That is jam-packed on Election Day. The last three times I have driven by during working hours, there's been plenty of spaces, but there are many precincts in County Commission District 3 where there is not asphalt parking for patrons to come in and vote, and I understand that those are not on county, county pieces of land. However, I think the liability for slip and falls would be the same. So, is this the intent of staff or the board to start paying for asphalt parking structures at all precincts as we move forward?
This is only a request from, from me for the Palm Bay Service Center.
Mr. Tobias, the other, the other properties that you're talking about, you're saying that they're not county-owned? They're churches or school, other properties that they have?
Yes, Mr. Chair, or municipal, but the point was brought up that there's a liability issue that people are coming in and slipping and falling.
I would think the liability issue would lie with the property owner, not with the county.
I would, I would want an attorney to answer that, especially on Election Day, because I imagine-
Well, let's ask Mr. Knox.
Yes, generally, they're going to be the owner.
Okay, so, since we own this property, that answers my question, because I too was thinking, as you were saying this, this, how much was it?
260.
$260,000 would pave some roads, and we've lived with this dirt lot for as long as we have, but the other side of that coin is if somebody does slip and fall, it's going to cost more than $260,000.
There are, there are fire stations as well that I believe would come under- There are, there are fire stations as well that I believe would come under the, again, I'm not an, not an attorney, but, but it's not just exclusively private, private facilities. There's also public facilities that don't have at least one, maybe two, in County Commission District 3 driving around, that, that could be a problem as well if we start down, if we start down this path. Because liability was not brought up in, in, in the report, and it's a valid issue. But my question is, is this starting a precedent that if we're going to start here, are we going to have to do this in, in, in those other facilities?
Any other comments? Does anybody want to vote on all three of these separately, or do we want to combine them?
I'll make a motion that we approve the complete item, which is 2D1.
2D1. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Barfield, a second by Commissioner Pritchett. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Pass is 3-2. Commissioner Zanardi and Commissioner Dwyer vote nay. Okay, let's move into public comments. And Phil Stasich.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Rochelle Breen, 5353 Radiance Court, Cocoa. Florida, according to the Center for Public Integrity, Florida scored a D minus in the most recent state integrity investigation. We scored an F in public access information, an F in lobbying disclosure, an F in political financing, a D minus in ethics enforcement agencies, and our electoral competitive score is unimpressively low, at 34 percent. These marks are not only an embarrassment, they're a sounding call for necessary action. According to the executive director of Represent Us, Josh Silver, "We are at a tipping point in this country. Americans from the left, right, and center are starting to fight back against our corrupt political system and winning. Represent Us is planned to drain the swamp begins with the American people taking a stand against a broken, corrupt political system and fighting for a government that represents the people, not special interests and lobbyists." And so, on behalf of our local chapter of Represent Us, that's what we're doing, this Saturday, we're inviting friends, citizens, leaders, and organizations of the Space Coast and challenging them to cross over the partisan divide, to speak in unison on these critical issues. It's an annual event called Representation Day, which will be celebrated in many other chapters across the nation on the same day. We invite you, our county leaders, and those leading and serving all municipal governments throughout the Space Coast as our closest allies. First defense and best course of action to restore public trust in our government officials locally. We need to be looking to Tallahassee and Washington DC to simply demand better. Our plan is to unite under a community proclamation that speaks to five main demands, which may or may not be modified over the next few months as we work on this. They are, one, campaign finance reform for clean government; two, mitigating measures until reform takes place, such as tax credits for people to contribute to the candidates of their choice.
You have 30 seconds.
Three, strengthening home rule authority for multiple reasons; four, restorative measures in transparency, accountability, and standards of conduct to include model provisions for the American Anti-Corruption Act; and five, a declaration of the right to expect loyalty from our public officials. General laws can then implement what this may look like, to include a duty to explain how the public interest is served should there be official acts under scrutiny for apparent conflicts of interest.
Thank you, Rochelle.
Please join us, April 29th, Representation Day. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Stasich.
Good morning, Chairman Smith and fellow commissioners. I'm Phil Stasich from North Merritt Island, speaking on behalf of the Space Coast Progressive Alliance. It's great to see all of you. We would like to speak on behalf of and in support of Represent Us. This is a very good organization and a very good effort. We do support that proclamation that they'll be presenting on Saturday, and we believe that this is building a foundation of campaign finance reform. Now, we support your efforts to keep our county government accountable to the citizens of Brevard. We expect your loyalty to the citizens, and we support your defense of your home rule authority. We encourage you to work with Represent Us, to use the American Anti-Corruption Act as a model for Brevard County. It's very good. To be clear, we are not accusing you of corruption in any way. But we ask that you take action to rebuild confidence in our local government. You can serve as an example for our state and federal legislators. And we look forward to working with you and Represent Us on this very critical effort. Do you have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Charlene Davis.
Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning. Yes, my name is Charlene Davis, and I am one of the Zumba Fitness instructors for Brevard Parks and Recreation. And I'm at Sandriff Community Center, teaching Zumba Fitness. The new proposed contract regarding the Brevard County Parks and Recreation Instructor Facility Use Agreement impacts both instructors and students. How, one, instructors have a bigger expense. We have fees that we have to pay every month for our Zumba instructor network. We have licenses. We have a lot of other expenses personally that we have to come out of our own pockets. And this is just one example of one of the Zumba instructors that I personally know who paid Brevard Parks and Recreation $837.50 last year based on the old contract. The new contract will have her paying over $1,500. That's above last year's payments, and that's not just for her, that's for every one of us. That's 179 percent increase in the new proposed contract, which, with such an increase, many instructors will be forced to give up their classes. Classes will be lost for the community centers because we can't no longer afford to teach our classes to the community. With such an increase, we'll be forced to give up everything that we worked so hard for. And I've been at Sandriff Community Center since October of 2010 on the previous contract, which was affordable. And with the new proposed contract, it even will knock me out as a grandfather person, per se. It takes years for many of us to build up our classes. A new instructor would either break even or not even make a profit, just like the rest of us. Many, if not all, cannot afford that. Those who can already have a nice size following, which is very few, and already have a studio of their own and are not interested in a community center. The minimum attendance of each facility will have to be enforced to ensure the room fee is covered. For example, a new minimum set will have to be five people. If four people show, that class would have to be canceled because we wouldn't be able to afford to teach our classes there. And of course, if the instructor isn't charged because they have to set up a room in preparation for the class, we have to set up. Fluctuations in attendance due to holidays.
You have 30 seconds.
Okay, thank you. More classes will be canceled. In conclusion, the people who have come to the community centers do not want a gym membership. They enjoy the personal relationships and feel community center setting gives them. Many of the people gain so much by attending our classes. Weight loss, happiness, stress relievers, everything. So please restore the previous contract terms.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, that's all public comments I have. Moving into 4A.
Commissioners, item 4A is a vacating request or petition to vacate a side lot easement on a lot inside Carrington and Addington Village Phase 1, which is in Viera. We've had no objections to this petition.
Pleasure to the board.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Pritchett, and a second by Commissioner Barfield. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Pass is 5-0.
Commissioners, item 4B is also a petition to vacate a, a right-of-way. This is a unimproved right-of-way in the plat of the National Police Home Foundation. It is on the east side of I-95 and is usually referred to as June Park. This is a isolated portion of road right-of-way which has, is serving no public purpose at this time, and, and we do not foresee it doing so. So we've received no objections to the petition, and it's here for your consideration.
Commissioners, this is in your district. Do you have any thoughts?
I don't have any objections. Very straightforward.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Commissioner Zanardi makes a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Barfield. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Pass is 5-0.
Item 4C is the budget supplement, and the purpose of this budget supplement is to adjust the balance forward that was budgeted for the current fiscal year. And those are those dollars that are brought forward from the prior fiscal year. And as you're aware, we begin budget development very early on in the springtime, and so part of that is estimating what dollars will be brought forward into the next year. And so the adopted balance forward includes those estimated dollars that are based on anticipated revenues and expenses, along with anticipated project completion. And so during the first several months of the new fiscal year, because we use the accrual method of accounting, there are adjustments being made. And then after several months, the financial statements are then reconciled, and the annual audit occurs. And then we receive the actual balance forwards from county finance during the month of February, which is just prior to the, the CAFER being released. And so the Budget Office works with departments to analyze the changes in the balance forward, the reason for those variances, and then we develop this supplemental budget package for the board's approval. And so included in your agenda package is the resolution, which is a requirement of Florida statute, because this is considered a supplement. And then along with the resolution is also a summary that is prepared in accordance with the Uniform Accounting Standards for the State of Florida, and that summary was advertised in the Florida Today on Friday. And then also included is a BCR, which explains for each fund what the adopted balance forward was, what the actual balance forward is, the primary reason for the change, and then how the change in funds are being appropriated. And so some good news I'd like to share with the board is that for the general government fund balance forward, that was actually an increase of $4 million, approximately $4 million. And so as Mr. Witten mentioned earlier, that was primarily the result of receiving more than anticipated in excess fees from the tax collector and the property appraiser, as well as some unexpended dollars in general government and unexpended transfers to the departments due to operational savings. And so the majority of this increase, approximately $2.5 million, is being appropriated to reserves, which puts us just under our goal of 10 percent of the operating revenues for general government. And so the Budget Office requests that the board approve the supplement budget, authorize the chairman to sign the resolution, and then approve the attached budget changes that are necessarily, necessary to implement the, the changes.
Pleasure to the board.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Pritchett, a second by Commissioner Barfield. Any comments? All those in favor vote aye. Aye. Opposed? Pass is 5-0. Laura Young, you have, come forward.
Glad to be back before you this morning. I know I came before you about two weeks ago to discuss the amendment to the aerial support temporary construction and drainage easement over Pine Street with Allabour, Florida. I understand I may have to come back before you again, but, but maybe not. I just want to reiterate a couple of things and maybe clarify a couple of things that I said last time. It is, it is somewhat unfortunate that this matter is being tied to another matter that will be coming before you shortly, when they're, they're very separate matters, separate applicants, separate matters, and it is a matter for which Allabour, Florida truly has no real control over. That being said, what I want you to keep in mind, what I want us all to remember is the importance of this amendment. This amendment is simple, but it is significant. It will help put in place the tools that the county and Allabour, Florida can use to have a successful partnership. This amendment anticipates or clarifies expectations that we already know the county is looking forward to, widening the road one day, putting in a sidewalk one day. And also puts in, puts in place a procedure that the county and Allabour, Florida can use to get through any additional future work that's done in that area or improvements that are done in that area. And it helps further solidify the legacy that this commission is leaving for our county. So I really want, I don't want to lose sight of the importance of this amendment and the tool that it can be used to help create a successful partnership now and into perpetuity. And then I'll take any questions.
Any questions from the board? Mr. Dwyer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I wasn't as prepared as I should have been, but I did last, last time, so I appreciate your indulgence to table the matter. In the research that I did independently, these two organizations, these two companies were owned, I guess, by Fortress for the better part of 10 years. It's my understanding now that not only are they separate, there's no overlap of any board members from one, one company to the, to the other, as, you know, was my understanding prior. Is that a fair assessment?
Now, you've done more research than me. I'm sorry, Commissioner Dwyer. I don't know that to be the case, but I do know there is no overlapping ownership any longer, which usually follows the control changes as well.
Okay, I, I looked over the board, and I did not see any similar names. I just wanted, you know, to see if there would be any leverage that way, and I couldn't find any.
No, there, there truly is no real control between the two applicants, shared control between the two applicants any longer.
Thank you, Monsieur.
Okay, thank you. This is a matter we're going to take up at the end of May, is that correct?
The, we are, we are negotiating and going through the process of obtaining approvals for proposed contracts and forms of easements with the Florida East Coast Railway with regard to the Piona extension overpass. The, and we do, I'm hoping that we will be able to bring it to the board before the June break, which would bring it on the, the May 23rd board meeting, regular board meeting on May 23rd.
Commissioner Pritchett.
I don't think I'm going to bring this up because I know it's going to be a supermajority vote, but I, I don't really know there's a correlation myself. And just common sense when I'm looking through it, they've really already got an easement. So my concern is that we're going to do this, and they're just going to go about their business because they can't, they still, they have the right-of-way on Pine Street, and then just get irritated and messes up on the other causeway. So I, I think this is going to end up having to go through just to make things not complicated, try to get a good working relationship with them, but I'm going to be ready to try to get a good working relationship with them, but I'm going to be ready to vote this through when we're ready to.
Moving on to 6A, 6C. Oh, did you have your light on?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Barfield.
I, I don't have a problem with this, and I'm, I'll vote, I'll vote for it, so just light out there.
Mr. Tobias.
I'm kind of counting votes here based on comments that have been laid forward, and I'm, you know, I counted to four with Mr. Barfield going in the affirmative and passed comments that other board members have made, so I would like to make a motion to vote in favor of the resolution that is before us.
What resolution is before us?
You have to do an option.
Sorry. Very rarely.
Let me just interject here. We, the county, is still negotiating this issue, and though the one company has been sold to a Mexican group, the participants and the negotiators haven't changed. They're still the same people. And if we vote now, we've handcuffed our negotiator. There is no more negotiation.
Correct.
That's the problem with doing it now.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chair, and I'm sorry for, you know, I would like to make a motion to approve the requested amendment as presented.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Tobias and a second by Commissioner Nardi. Any other comments? Mr. Denninghoff, would you like to weigh in on this?
I will only say that the FEC has repeatedly brought up the All Aboard Florida situation. They are monitoring it very carefully. Why exactly, I don't know. They may not have a ownership interest any longer, but I know they do have a business interest. And so other than that, I, you know, will follow Board direction.
Mr. Barfield.
Well, I hate to throw a wrinkle in here, but, you know, I hate to make this vote and go ahead and pass this and find out there's something else down the road. It's not going to be any harm to table it. Can I ask you that? I mean, what would be the, is there any timeframe?
No, I appreciate you asking me, Commissioner Barfield. Our preference, of course, would be an approval, but if we don't have four votes, we would request to table it, or we would be fine with tabling it.
And time is not of the essence because the end of May works just as well as the end of April.
I just have to keep coming back. Yes?
Well, I hate to say it, but I just changed my mind, so you may want to pull your vote or whatever, so.
Yeah, we don't want to see it fail.
I, I'd like to make absolutely sure.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Tobias, you have the floor.
Even though it's been made and seconded, I'm sorry, I'm not that skilled on parliamentary procedure, but I would like to pull the, the request for the approval of the amendment and table it for a later date.
Duly noted.
Can I, can I just make one comment? And I need it to be for a date certain because of a notice requirement we have?
Correct. May 23.
23.
I agree.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Moving right along.
We have to table first.
We just did.
Do we have to vote to table it?
No.
You have a motion to table it. You need to vote on the motion, too.
We do need to vote to table it? Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Tobias to table this. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Pritchett. Anyone wish to vote no? Pass is 5-0.
Commissioners, I assume that that is to the date certain of May 23, correct?
Correct. Moving to 6C.
Good morning, Commissioners. Ted Cawkins, Planning and Development. 6C1 is a request to consider the Board special, I mean, for the Board to consider the Special Magistrate's recommendation to reduce an accrued fine for a violation at 375 Acorn Street in Cocoa, Florida for code enforcement case 13 CE-00848, and the fine reducing it from $4,151 down to $2,462, and direct staff to prepare and execute a release of satisfaction upon receiving full payment for, for that matter. A little bit of background on this is on February 16, Mr. Norris petitioned the code enforcement Special Magistrate for a fine reduction. Mr. Norris stated that he purchased a property in a tax detail in March 2016, and he had brought the property in compliance by cleaning up the litter and debris on the property, which the previous owner was found in violation for back in July of 2013. The Board may consider the options presented in the agenda report. If you have any further questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Comments from the Board? We have a card on this. Anthony Norris.
Yes, sir.
Say your name and your address, please.
Anthony Norris. I currently live in California, 3570 Sierra Marina Avenue, Carlsbad, California. I have, my family lives here in Florida, and my dad's actually retired. We've been kind of buying investment properties, tax liens. This particular property, they're not in the best area. On the tax liens, I typically have to pay all cash, so when they come in, I kind of have to, I can only afford certain ones, and the certain ones usually are more the problematic properties. This particular property, the previous owner was a drug problem to the community. We had to go through the process of first evicting him and then cleaning up the property as far as all the code violations go. Now I have to go in and do a remodel, rehab on the property in order to bring it up to par and get it kind of back up and running again.
Pleasure of the Board.
I move to approve. Thank you for cleaning up this property, by the way, with the Special Magistrate's recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Pritchett and a second by Commissioner Nardi. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Pass is 5-0. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Commissioner, are you ready to move to 6C2?
Yes.
Okay, so this is a request for the Board to consider Special Magistrate recommendation from an accrued fine at 375 Acorn Street, Cocoa, Florida for code enforcement case 12 CE-02027, from 2,648 down to 624, and direct staff to prepare and execute the release of satisfaction of the lien upon repayment of the, in full.
Pleasure of the Board.
Move to approve recommendation.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Pritchett, a second by Commissioner Nardi. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Pass is 5-0.
Thank you.
You're welcome. 6C3.
Commissioners, 6C3, it's a request to schedule an executive session to discuss the firefighter contract negotiations with the firefighter local 2969. We just need to get a date certain, given how tight the challenges have been this month. We've given you a couple of options for dates and times, so we just need some direction.
Has the Board looked at these dates? Do we have?
I'm fine with any of them.
May 11 works for me.
I'm good. Does anyone have them?
Okay, we have two weigh-in. May 11 works.
Works for me.
Okay. Commissioner Nardi, May 11th work for you?
Yep.
Okay. Do I have a motion to propose May 11 for our executive session?
Motion to schedule executive session for May 11.
We have a motion by Commissioner Nardi, a second by Commissioner Barfield. Anyone wish to vote no? Pass is 5-0. Thank you, Commissioners. 6D1.
Chairman, this is a revision to the burn ban ordinance. It's an emergency ordinance which is being implemented at the Board's direction to reduce the drought index number from 700 to 500. It also changes the name of the drought index to Kichirbyron Drought Index, which is the correct name, and modifies the actual agency responsible for the implementation of the drought index to the Florida Forest Service instead of the Florida Department of Forestry. We've also recommended that you allow the county attorney's office to go back and look through the ordinance and make sure the definitions are up to date, but that'll be a separate ordinance that comes back to you.
We have a motion to approve the burn ban emergency ordinance. Mr. Chair. Mr. Tobias.
May I ask a few, yeah, may I ask a few questions? This came before us, literally it was handed to us at the end of the meeting, so I did have a couple of questions, and the question I had last time, I believe, was answered incorrectly. We were told that it was temporary, and while the period would be temporary, I guess lowering the ban from 700 to 500 was permanent, or at least will be if we go forward with this. So my questions are as follows. Are the surrounding counties, were we out of, were we out of whack with being 700, and by putting 500, are we in congruence with the surrounding counties? And second of all, the burn ban deals with fireworks, so my question is, what is, is this going to have any impact on, you know, July 4 celebrations across the county?
The, answer your first question, I did send you an email back yesterday afternoon. We are in line with surrounding counties. Orange County's emergency declaration that Mayor Jacobs signed mentions a 500 KDBI trigger point. Osceola, Seminole, and Polk County as well have, those are the other bigger counties that are similar in size to us have the 500 as a trigger point as well. Answer your second part, it does deal with, it doesn't affect the commercial sale of fireworks, nor does it affect commercial fireworks shows. It would only affect the people that would be buying fireworks for home use.
One quick follow-up, Mr. Chair.
Sure, absolutely.
I have no idea, like, the last couple of years around that July 4, obviously, there's numerous businesses in the area, and I don't know that I've read in the paper that, you know, there's been a fire related to one of, you know, an individual's use of fireworks. Do you happen to know around the July 4 timeframe what it was last year in this index or the year before? I just want to see what the potential impact would be if we were to raise it from, sorry, drop it from 700 to 500.
Fireworks is absolutely a cause of fires during July 4, and don't forget, people buy fireworks in, in, in June into July, and people are lighting them off from, you know, July 1 to July 8. I mean, 4th of July last, it's like Hanukkah. So fireworks, we're dealing with those fireworks-related fires all the time. Same holds true for New Year's Eve. We have fireworks-related fires there. Obviously, the dry conditions don't, don't, don't help that, and, you know, the weather of the season is, obviously, we don't have that, as many fires, but they do, they do occur. Our biggest concern is, you know, areas, dry areas with lots of woods, Port St. John, Canaveral Grove, there's, there's a great potential, when it's this dry, for something to happen.
One final follow-up, Mr. Chair. Okay, sorry I wasn't clear. July 4, 2017.
Okay.
July 4, 2016. Sorry, sorry, 16 and 15, I'm getting ahead of us. You know, what was on this index? What was it that, you know, I'd like to know whether it would have qualified last year? And you brought up a very valid point, January 1 or, you know, December 31, these last couple years, would I have been allowed to buy my fireworks for agricultural purposes?
I can look up historically and see what that, what that number is. I don't have that off the top of my head.
I have a question. Is this, in fact, a permanent lowering to 500?
It would lower it to 500 permanently, correct. Having the, the trigger point at 700 is way too late. The scale only goes up to about 750-plus. So by the time that the KDBI reaches that 700 point, we're already deep in, you know, we're, we're deep in it already, so we're experiencing a lot of fires. We don't have time to react. That 500 is right in line with other agencies across the state, and we feel comfortable that that would give us enough time to, to react and be able to gear up for the, for the fire season.
Okay. Pleasure of the Board. Mr. Tobias.
Mr. Chair, I don't know that this is going to be met with any, any support, but this could have a tremendous impact on businesses. As you know, there's, whatever, three or four at least, firework businesses in Brevard County that I think probably make, and I have no idea, but a sizable portion of their revenue around the January 1 and July 4 fireworks season, and this could, in effect, decimate, you know, their, their business model. And it may not, based on the information that it's dry in that time, but absent of that information, I don't, you know, I don't, I could not support, you know, potentially putting out, you know, putting people out of, putting people out of work based on, based on this.
Commissioner Barfield.
Well, I believe that fireworks basically are illegal in Florida, except, and you'll have to remind me of the rules. The rule is if you go to buy fireworks, you have to sign a waiver that you're scaring birds or doing some other agriculture. Is that correct, Chief? It's something like that?
There is a loophole in the law that allows people to buy fireworks for agricultural purposes.
Okay. Well, we have a lot of agricultural things going on on, on July 4 and January 1, so.
Well, the birds come out on July 4.
There's a lot of other stuff comes out, too, but that's another story.
Commissioner Nardi.
You know, maybe, maybe the, the answer here is to wait till we have complete information, like those numbers, you know, maybe we, I know, tabling this for a meeting isn't going to change anything as far as timeline goes, but, you know, that, it's a pretty significant decrease, I would think, so armed with that, I would feel more comfortable making a decision.
Commissioner Pritchett.
Is Volusia County at 500?
No, Volusia County's better than us. They're, they're below. They're in the 400 range.
Okay.
Currently, as we speak, I believe us, Orange County, and Seminole County are all in the 500 to 550 range.
Okay, because we go out there during the 4th of July, and it doesn't stop them from shooting off fireworks either. My question is, well, my thought is to, we don't really enforce it on the 4th of July, so I, I think this is probably going to have parameters for different items because we're not very good at enforcing those anyways. So I'm not real sure it's going to affect the holiday season, other than you might have a little bit more support behind you if, if something goes really off kilter, but so on that, I, I don't think this is going to really affect those holidays a whole lot. So I'm probably okay supporting this just because my district's got a lot of fires right now, and I think we need to do something to protect the houses and the wildlife.
Commissioner Barfield.
You know, we have so many issues out there. I, I would much rather err on the side of being safe for, for our citizens because we have a number of fires going right now. I would much rather take the safe side and say, yeah, yeah, let's do this, so I'll approve this.
Okay, my turn. As a businessman, conservative patriot, I am fully sympathetic with the people that sell fireworks and their ability to make a profit. In fact, I've marveled many times that these folks basically have two days a year that they can sell, or that they do, not can, that they do sell fireworks and that they make money. And they always seem to be in a very, very prominent location, which translates into very expensive commercial property. And they make enough money in those two days to support those commercial properties for the other 12 months. But at the same time, caution, I think, is the motivator for me in this particular situation because... because I spent last weekend in the woods up by Rodman Dam, which is, I'm not sure which county that is. It's on the Oklawaha River, and they have a banned burn there, and I don't know what their number is, but there are no open fires allowed in the campgrounds, and the surrounding area is like a tinderbox. And if we can prevent one fire, I think it would be worthwhile. If we can prevent the death of one person or one firefighter by this ban, I think it would be worthwhile. It's unfortunate that it may curtail somewhat the sale of fireworks, but I don't think you can put a price on the value of people's properties, the treasures that they would lose in their homes if the home burned down, which has to be a devastating event in anyone's life. And as far as devastating events, there would be nothing more devastating than losing a person, a firefighter included. So in order to protect property and to protect our firefighters and our citizens, I think it would behoove us to vote in favor of this. We're not saying that you can't ever have a fireworks display, and we certainly haven't restricted commercial fireworks, we're just saying that in years like this, like in 1998 when we had the dry seasons, caution has to be the word of the day. So that's my thought, so do we have any other thoughts? Mr. Knox?
Yeah, just because this is an emergency ordinance, it does require four votes to pass it as an emergency ordinance, otherwise we'd have to advertise it and bring it back.
Okay, thoroughly noted. The question becomes, do we have four votes? Do we have a motion, first of all?
I move to approve it.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Pritchett to approve this burn ban.
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Barfield. Any other discussion? Commissioners Nardi.
And, you know, I would probably be more apt to approve something like this if it wasn't permanent year-round. Maybe we do it during the dry season, maybe that's the compromise. And I know, you know, it pretty much rains the entire summer, and that wouldn't be appropriate. And I just get a little leery about jumping the gun on the, I could bring any argument to this commission and any ordinance to this commission and say that I'm doing it for your own safety, and I don't want to be, you know, coerced or pressured into voting for something just because it's, you know, it's got that tone to it. So although I sympathize, I remember the Mother's Day fires, it wasn't started because it was dry, it was started because there was an arsonist. And although fires do start because of the dry weather, I mean, we're punishing not just business, we're punishing people that do use them for agricultural purposes, so...
Commissioners, if I may, over here.
Yes.
Just to clarify, the, in a different subsection, this lifts if the drought index, the KDBI, KBDI, falls below four fifty. But these are some of the things, some of the issues you discussed are some of the things that we would like to address and come back with you with some recommendations.
So would you request that we table this now, or do you want us to take a vote?
My recommendation would be as you pass the emergency ordinance and allow us to come back and address some of the issues that you've raised.
Okay. So do we have a motion to pass this with the proviso that we come back with recommendations that we might make?
Commissioner, before you take that vote, could we just ask for the county attorney to clarify for us, would the ban, current ban that's in place, stay in effect if this emergency ordinance does not get passed?
Technically, the authority to ban is based on the ordinance. You have taken, made the policy decision to lower it to five hundred previously. This gives you some additional, arguably some additional enforcement and meat behind the fact that you have issued that ban, in terms of it being county-wide.
Pleasure to the board. Mr. Devine.
You know, I think this is very serious, and so serious, I think we need more information that has been delineated right here to weigh this against, you know, cost of people's jobs. And it may not, but we don't have that, we don't have that answer. So knowing that you need four votes, it would be my recommendation to table this, and just, you know, so we can help count to four here, and take this up when we have those, when we have those facts and figures, because I don't want this to go down. I know we can bring it up again next, you know, with any changes next meeting, but, you know, just to go on the record, I will be voting, should this come up, I will be the one, I will be at least one vote against this passing.
If we do nothing today, we're going to have to advertise this. What kind of timeframe are we looking at?
We can bring it back at the next meeting, requires ten days' notice.
Okay. Commissioners Nardi.
Yeah, that would be my suggestion. I mean, we have the temporary in place now, I mean, we did that last meeting, so, you know, ten days of advertising one meeting would still get us something done before.
And at that time, the vote is required, three? We would need three to pass?
Correct.
Okay.
That would make a lot more sense, because even if, you know, I still was, you know, hesitant to pass it, you would have your...
Commissioner Pritchett.
We have emergency ban in place, so I'll be okay tabling it, and we'll bring it back next time for more discussion and work through these issues.
Do we need a motion to table it?
Need a motion to table it, and to, as part of that motion, authorize advertisements for the next meeting.
Okay, we have...
We have a motion on table?
We do. So I'd like to withdraw, I'm gonna do it, Mr. Devine did a minute ago, withdraw my motion, and change it to a motion to table it and an ability to advertise this before next meeting.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Pritchett. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioners Nardi. All those in favor vote aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Pass is five zero. Thank you.
Commissioner Devine, if I may, just clarification, you wanted the KDBI for 2015, 2016 over the course of the July 4th holidays?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, yes, as well as January 1st, I imagine, that you brought up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Six E.
Mr. Chairman, at the last workshop, with regards to the subject of inter-local agreements for, with the cities for the CRAs, you all directed staff to come back with an item where you would give some direction to staff in terms of the parameters that you would like to see them work with as they are negotiating the inter-locals with the cities. And so this item is requesting that you provide direction to staff.
What kind of direction are, you want us to individually reach out to you with our suggestions and requirements?
No, I think you all should do it as a board, so that staff has board direction going forward on, again, the parameters that you would like to see in the individual inter-locals with the cities for their CRAs.
Commissioner Pritchett.
Yeah, I think the consensus between the cities, I think they were willing to do the inter-locals, which are good. So my thought would be just to work out an agreement for the timeframes for ending of the CRAs. I think that was the main concern, that these things didn't go on forever and ever, amen. So I think that would be a place that we should work with the cities and get in their agreements.
I have a whole list here of things that could be added. How much money do they need to finish their plan? When is their, when their plan is finished, would they oppose the county retaining the county's portion to supplement road maintenance? Would they oppose using CRA funds to bring the roads within the CRA up to county standards? And would they be willing to sunset the CRA after the plan is completed? In other words, what I'm suggesting here is that they tell us what they need, what kind of timeframe they need to complete their plan, instead of just going out to, as you say, forever and ever. So that would be a question that I would think would be pertinent. Would they be willing to sunset the CRA after they finish or complete the plan that they're working on now? Because I can tell you, I've looked at these CRAs from top to bottom and from the north to the south, and it seems like they never go away. I, not wanting to pick on any one particular one, but let's just use Myra, for example, their original plan was, I think, in 1988, and the area that was blighted, they've long since corrected, and now they've moved on to, I think this is maybe their sixth or seventh project, and they, right now, they plan to go to 2042. Well, I submit that by 2042, the blight that occurred that they fixed in 1988 is going to be blighted again. So when does this thing ever stop? So my point is that CRAs, while I recognize the purpose, I think what they need to do is have a finite time and a plan, a specific plan, and when the plan is done, they should be done. It shouldn't just be a time element. It shouldn't just be thirty years, or twenty years, or fifteen years. I think the plan has to be submitted, and when the plan is completed, the CRA goes away. That's just me. Another question I would like to ask would be, what is their debt service payment and their terms? And what oversight does the county have on the CRA? So those are my concerns. So we can do this at a different time, we can talk about this, we can put our individual list together. How about if we do that and we bring them back up at the next meeting? Does that work for the county?
I'm just looking for the board direction, obviously.
Okay, so the next, our next meeting is when?
May 9th is regular.
May 9th, okay. So that gives us two and a half, three weeks, whatever. Does that work for you guys?
Yep.
Mr. Devine.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I had a couple of suggestions to add to yours, you know, as we move forward, and that was that all TIF payments appropriated by the county to community redevelopment agency which exceed minimum debt service for the current fiscal year should be remitted to the county at the end of the fiscal year, as well as prohibiting CRAs from incurring any new debt. So that allows the CRAs to continue with the debt service that they currently have, but not extend the life by entering into, you know, a fifteen or a twenty-year commitment that may go beyond those plans. You know, the simpler, the better, and I think, you know, this is something that we can deal with. As far as the Merritt Island one, I think the Merritt Island one's a little bit different. I think the Merritt Island one, the way that it's established, that we as a board can get together, and if we don't like that, and you will have my full support, but we have the ability, that's a unique one, but we certainly have the ability to take corrective action on that. Just to put it in perspective, last year's TIF payment to Merritt Island that we have discretion over was $1,058,244. So if you are ready to, you know, bring that one forward, bring that one to a close, you know, I don't mind leading that, or, you know, or you as the chairman to bring a, you know, a resolution forward that we can rein that one in. That is the lowest-hanging fruit out there, but if you want to deal with that one separately, there's not an inter-local agreement needed to sunset that one immediately. Further, thankfully, they have no debt, so that is something that we would not have to take into consideration like we do many of the other CRAs. So, you know, that's your, you know, discretion. If you want to take that, that's great. If not, you know, I think I have something working right now in the county attorney's office that will deal with that, but, you know, certainly at your discretion. You just mentioned the Merritt Island one, so I certainly wanted to piggyback off that.
Mr. Barfield.
Well, two things. Number one, with Myra, we can discuss that in another meeting. I think it's only fair that the community knows about that. The other thing is, I totally agree with what Commissioner Smith is saying. I agree, in fact, I'd maybe even go a little bit further in detail. I believe that what the CRAs should do to ensure that they do have an end date is, you take their plans that are already approved, and it's normal business, you go and you project out what each year costs to do those projects, and you run that out when they get the last project done, it sunsets. It's that simple. And I think that if it's ten years, fifteen years, five years, two years, that's what it is. The other thing to consider is, the funds that come in, what they're projecting, anything over that comes back to the county, to the general fund. So I believe we can project it that way, do it, it's almost like a long-term or short-term business plan. You have it worked out, and that's when it sunsets. That way, we hold it to it, and it's all, it's all as approved. But I agree with what you're saying, Commissioner Smith.
Commissioners Nardi. Oh. Pritchett, I'm sorry.
I was gonna say, I actually was on there, and then you cleared it. I was on there like twice, and you cleared it, so it's okay, it's not, I'm not offended, I promise. You mentioned many of the things that I probably, and Commissioner Devine as well, that I was actually going to bring forward. I would like to see, and the thing that we're going to be really struggling with is what we're legally allowed to do as a board. And I know, you know, we can tie their hands and they can, you know, agree to enter into an agreement, but they're not obligated to. Now, I hope that they will, you know, in good faith, do that, but I would like to see a dissolution clause in that agreement, if possible, that if they don't live up to, or make efforts, every effort to live up to what they say they're going to do with the district, that we possibly at least have an out. But is it legally binding is a question for the attorney.
Well, we'll be when they sign it, that's the purpose of the inter-local agreement.
Right.
And I want to remind you that they came to that meeting, and they were all volunteers. They didn't have to come to that either.
That whole meeting setup is probably a completely different discussion for another meeting, because I think there was some confusion with not just the tone of the meeting, I think that even some of the members that were at the meeting, the elected officials that were at our meeting, were confused on the fact that it was our workshop. Now, while I enjoyed listening to their presentations and appreciated their input, there seemed to be a bit of a power struggle. I mean, I didn't even have enough room to put my items on my workshop table, because I was so sandwiched in with people, and there was a lot of emotions, and it just, I would hope that that kind of thing doesn't happen again, unless we advertise and agree to have a joint meeting than that, or a joint workshop, but anyway. So again, some legal direction, I guess, on that, on what are, I would like to see it broken down quite simply. I know each one has their own rules, I know we've gotten some opinions on some of them, but I would like a clear, very simple spreadsheet on what can, you know, can't be done with some of these if we do get pushback, because I don't imagine that every single one of these municipalities are going to be in agreement. I mean, I know with Myra, they're very protective of that area, so I don't know that they're going to be as willing necessarily, because they really count on those funds. But this is probably, again, I think that we should also submit our information, and we can, as long as we're not replying to each other, can copy each other on this as well, but this is probably a lengthier discussion than an agenda item. That's why I liked your idea of submitting our stuff individually. And then if, and if Mr. Knox has an issue with it, then he can bring those items back to the board where we don't have consensus, or where there's, you know, or we can submit them as part of the next agenda.
Well, and I just want to reiterate that these people are willing to be our partners. They came willingly to sign an inter-local agreement, so it's going to be a negotiated thing, but they're going to be at the table, we're going to be at the table, we're giving staff direction, and they will take those items and we'll go from there. And so hopefully, we can work this out, as it was mentioned at the meeting numerous times by our partners in the cities, that they're all adults, we're adults, and we can get there, we just have to work together. Commissioner Pritchett.
Yeah, I think you mentioned we have to negotiate a mutual benefit between both of the entities as we move forward, so we're not going to be able to throw out a lot of things that they're just not going to do, we're not going to get to any agreement, and there's not going to be any inter-local agreements formed. So I think I understand what you're asking, and I think from what I was hearing in the communication, they were totally comfortable with coming together with time periods, and these CRAs have to have approved plans when they get started, they have to have their blueprint of what They have to have their blueprint of what they're doing moving forward. So I don't think they're gonna struggle with having their approved plan ready and sunsetting after their plan's completed. I do think we're gonna get a lot of pushback if you try to control their debt service, because what they do is they have promised TIF amounts, and sometimes it's easier if you've got a hunk of money up front. So they go and leverage that TIF fund, and they take out bonds over a period of time to pay it off. It doesn't cost us any more money, but they have the money up front to do it. Our Titusville CRA did that. We got a big amount of money through the bonds. We were able to do the project all at once, which started encouraging other businesses to move in, so it didn't have to spread over 20 years. So I think, my opinion, you know, it'd help you as you're working forward, that we need to get a time period done with the approved plans, like we're considering. And I think Myra's gonna be a whole different animal. It's the only county CRA we have, and Commissioner Smith basically works as the mayor of that district. I'm sorry, Barfield, which I actually said that. So I think it's a different thing, and what you're using it for is infrastructure, things that we as a county are gonna have to do anyways. So if we mess with Myra, we're gonna have to designate that amount of money probably to these projects anyways. So they're all so different, every CRA is different. So my marching orders to you, and we'll have to get a consensus up here as we move forward, would be to work towards the time periods, and by the CRA plans, that when they complete their plans, they would sunset those also, and that would be the same type of parameters we're putting forward to the CRAs and the municipalities.
Commissioner Barfield.
Yeah, just to remind everybody, we still, Tallahassee still has negotiating out Senate and House bills consolidating, so whatever happens there, if anything happens, we also get impacted, so.
Mr. Knox.
I was gonna suggest that maybe the board individually want to put your list together of things that you'd like to see negotiated, and then have that compiled maybe with Frank's office, and then bring it back to you, and let you vote on each one, go down the list, and if you get three or two, or whatever it is you get out of that list, we can do that.
Does that work, Mr. Abate?
That would be fine.
Okay, so then that would be the direction that I think we need to go. Come up with your plans, your thoughts, what you would like to see included in these interlocal agreements. Submit them to Mr. Abate, and you could get them back to us for the next meeting.
We'll be happy to.
And then we can discuss them and move forward at that point in time. Mr. Tabia.
Yes. Do you want a generic list? I think the CRAs asked to be treated as individual, or do you want overarching ones for all of them, or do you want specific, you know, to each CRA? I'm just asking for direction as we move forward.
I think either would work.
Okay.
If you can be specific enough to go CRA by CRA. For me, most of it is generic, so I will just put my list together, and we'll cover it at the next meeting. Any other thoughts before we move on? Who's covering that? Well, I, yeah, I can. Go ahead.
Commissioners, this is a request to approve the resolution that's in the agenda packet in support of the purchase of local toll roads by the Central Florida Expressway Authority. And basically, the authority would like to purchase the local toll roads in their jurisdiction that are owned by FDOT, so that toll and operational policies are consistent throughout the region, and also so that operational and maintenance efficiencies are realized. And so those jurisdictions consist of the city of Orlando, Osceola, Seminole, Orange, and Lake Counties. Actually, they've passed resolutions in support of the purchase.
Commissioner Pritchett.
County manager, were you able to find out the information, where the local toll roads, the funds?
Yeah, Mr. Calm is gonna help answer that question, Commissioner.
What we have to go on about whether there could be tolls established, whether there are not now, we really don't have much beyond, there's nothing in the letter about that, but statute does allow the operating authority of a toll road to establish toll plazas to collect tolls. So if there was a transfer, the CFX, Central Florida Expressway Authority, could collect tolls, but so could the Florida Turnpike now, for those that, those sections of road that are under the Turnpike. So I think the answer is, it's yes, no matter who has the road, there could be tolls established. There are already tolls being paid for 528 and 407 in Brevard County. That is not widely understood, that 528 west of 95 and 407 west of 95 are toll roads. There's no toll plaza, however. The tolls are collected as part of the mainline tolls by, in the CFX, and then paid back to the DOT by Central Florida Expressway Authority. So they're already toll roads in Brevard. The question I have about the letter, it does not state that there will be any discussion or analysis requested for the part of 528 east of Industry Roads, State Road 524, out to the port, over Merritt Island, that is under the jurisdiction of the Florida Department of Transportation, and is not a toll road. So what happens to that? It's part of the problem of 528. It's under three different jurisdictions. Nobody's in charge of it. There's no consistent vision or pattern of operation. So what we have to go with, I would expect, is just what we know would be allowed in statute. Now, the bill to add a seat on the Expressway Authority for Brevard has its final stop in the Rules Committee in the Senate this afternoon, and that is its last stop before it can go to the floor of the Senate, it's already passed the House. So if there were, that bill moves on, it's passed, and we do have for Brevard a seat on the Expressway Authority, there would be someone representing Brevard in case a discussion about purchase, or new tolls, or changing in the toll rates would come up before the Expressway Authority. We'd have representation, which we would not otherwise have.
It's the tolls, let's say that the area and state tolls into Brevard County, those tolls that are collected there, do they stay in Brevard County, or are they gonna end up in Orlando?
For a long time, the tolls on 528 west of 95 were used to pay bonds, retired bond debt that was incurred by DOT for the widening of State Road 520. So in that way, it did go in Brevard and for, it went to a roadway that benefited Brevard. I believe those bonds are paid off, and now they just go to the maintenance of the roadway.
Mike, 'cause I'm thinking, back when they used to do that, the tolls were like 10 and 15 cents, and those toll booths made $80,000 a month in revenues. So although this sounds like a good idea, my only hesitation would be that they would reinstate the tolls, because there's gotta be a reason they want the roads back, and then we wouldn't see any of those revenues into Brevard County that would help with our roads.
Well, I believe the letter actually asks for a fiscal analysis. It does not really commit to making a transfer. So this is just a request to study it. So I think there will be an action coming back, once there's some numbers known, and at that time, we would have a member likely on the Expressway Authority that we'd have a voice in the discussion.
Okay, so that's, moving forward, that's gonna be my only hesitation, is to make sure that Brevard's getting the funds that are appropriate.
I hadn't thought about that, and I'm glad you raised it, because that's an important point in Brevard. I should've thought of that, that's the real hot button. But I think with membership on the authority, we'd at least have some control, not control, some say in what happens, where we wouldn't otherwise.
Thank you.
We have a card for Kenneth Delgado.
Kenneth Delgado, 154 Angelo Road, Palm Bay, Florida. Not that this has anything to do exactly with what this is expressing, but just a thought in reference to toll roads, and the possibility of additional tolls. Going to an event over in Orlando, and trying to get there, and not being very knowledgeable of the area, I find that there's a proliferic, proliferic...
Pliferation.
Thank you, a proliferation of tolls going up, and it reminds me of that $1 switch that they do in Tallahassee. Supposedly, we're paying taxes for roads, and now all of a sudden, we're having a switch, and it seems like the only way to get to somewhere, anywhere, is going to be through toll roads, which leads me to questions, someone's making some money on this, and therefore, the question, in my view, is, are we trying to just increase taxes on the people versus fiscal responsibility as we place dollar after dollar after dollar, at least in the Orlando area? I know we're not there yet, but it seems to be the trend. I'm wondering if we have snuck in an extra tax that pulls out from revenues that were already paid through our state taxes for roads and to our government, and whether or not, at some point in time, you might find yourselves having a uprising from the people that says, when is enough enough, and when should we stop and let public roads be just that, public roads, that's already been financed? So just a thought. It's just been rolling through my mind in the last month, as I plotted, put down dollar after dollar after dollar, trying to get to one place or another in Orlando, and wondering if that's gonna happen here in Brevard County.
Thank you. Comments from the board? Commissioner Pritchett.
Yeah, you're gonna love this. I'm gonna request that we table it, so we get information back on how the tolls are distributed through the area. I think this is gonna be a huge revenue driver, and I think there's a reason they're wanting to pick up our toll roads right now. So just on that, I don't think it'll hurt waiting a couple of weeks till we get a little bit more information on that, and just for the commission's consideration.
Any other thoughts? Commissioner Tabia.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Is that a motion by Commissioner Pritchett to table that, and then I will second that?
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Pritchett, and a second by Commissioner Tabia. And any other comments? I would just, and I don't have a problem with tabling, and information's always good. The purpose of us being seated on the Expressway Authority is so that we do have some comment, and we have a seat at the table. If we don't have a seat at the table, they can institute tolls, and we have no say. So then you're paying tolls without any say, yes, no, or maybe. So keep that in mind. If we have a seat at the table, we help control the direction. So we have a motion, a second. If there's no more discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Pass is 5-0. 6F2.
I'll take that one.
Okay.
This is a resolution, and for Ruby Frye, she could not be here. It's a resolution commemorating her 100th birthday, and I will provide the resolution to her, I think, later this week. But anyway, it's a resolution, we don't need to read it, but I'd like to make a motion that we pass this resolution.
We have a motion by Commissioner Barfield to pass this resolution for May 2nd, being Ruby Frye Day.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Pritchett.
I throw in a discussion.
Sure.
She is the most wonderful woman. I've known her for a long time, and she's healthy at 100 years old, and she's got a lot of personality, and she doesn't take any medication at all. She's pretty impressive.
God bless her.
Yeah.
God bless her. Anyone wish to vote no? Pass is 5-0. We have no public comments. Moving into board reports. Mr. Witten, your final board report.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. And actually, I'm very proud to actually have a presentation to the board, or call more than a couple of meetings ago, several commissioners asked that we bring before you the successful Lean Six Sigma projects. And so today, we're gonna have a short presentation on the development application process. And recall how successful that was. I know Commissioner Zanardi attended the last developers' roundtable and saw some of the fruits of that labor there. And so the development application process team, led by Rebecca Reagan, and Rebecca's on your left, and Lynn Dorbert Lobby, she's on your right, they're gonna do the presentation. The other team members are Andy Holmes, who's the Assistant Director of Public Works, of course, Tack Hawkins, who's the Director of Planning and Development, Don Keen is an Engineer III, and Tanya Ramos Minor is a Planner I, and they're in the audience there. And so without further ado, Mr. Chair, and at the pleasure of the board, I'll turn it over to Rebecca and Lynn.
Good morning, Commissioners. So we're here to update you on the team's success with the development application review process, otherwise known as DAP. So the original problem was that the county was receiving feedback from the development community regarding our development approval process, specifically site plan and subdivision applications. Both the developers and their engineering firms expressed concerns that it takes too long to get site plan and subdivision applications approved. A major concern is that since construction cannot begin until approval is granted, a long approval process slows down economic development. The initial observation by county personnel was twofold. First, we thought we could only affect the part of the process that is under the county's control, which is the county's review of the application, and uncertainty was expressed as to how that review time could be reduced further. Second, based on statistics gathered, the largest portion of the review cycle time resided in the developers' and engineers' turnaround time for resubmission. The county felt it was important to address this complex process problem and build a partnership with our customers. So the county assembled a Lean Six Sigma team to use the DMAIC approach. DMAIC is an acronym for the steps of the process, define, measure, analyze, improve, and control. With DMAIC, teams can expose and resolve the root causes of process problems to achieve significant improvements that last. The DMAIC approach is thorough and systematic. We will touch on some of the highlights of the team's efforts, as shown on the left-hand side of your screen. So we started by listening to our customers. We surveyed and interviewed developers, engineers, and county reviewers to clearly understand the problems with the process. Common themes that came out of the feedback included, the application reviews take too long and are too numerous, there are too many interfaces at the county, and the overall communication is inadequate. We took detailed measurements of the process, much like a doctor listening to a heartbeat and measuring vitals. We found that there was a lot of back and forth in the process. The county would review the application and the document issues. The engineer would revise the application plans and resubmit them. The county would find still issues, and typically, this cycle repeated itself three or more times for each application. So on average, the county spent 47 days reviewing and re-reviewing an application, and the developers' engineer would spend an average of 70 days revising and resubmitting the plans. So a total of 117 days, on average, were spent before the application got final approval. So we dug in deeper, following the DMAIC process, and found some surprising results. While there were some opportunities to reduce the county reviewer turnaround time, we found that by speeding up this part of the process, it would not have a measurable effect on the overall application review time. The chart shows that projects that had a quicker review turnaround time did not result in faster approval. in faster approval. What did have a significant effect was in two areas, the review, number of review cycles, and the time that the developer engineer responds to issues. We evaluated these factors to uncover the root causes of these problems. We worked closely with developers, engineers, and the county reviewers. We uncovered many root causes. For example, we found that the reviewer's feedback was not consistently formatted and led to confusion on the engineer's part. This was an interesting find because it gave us some indication that we could influence the time that it took for the engineer to respond with their revisions. Working with the team, and the developers, engineers, and county reviewers, we developed many potential solutions, as you can see by the photo. We worked methodically to call this list down to a manageable set of solutions that would reach our goal. The final solution set includes a development review meeting where the developers, engineers, and county reviewers convene to communicate and resolve the issues within the application. We also are having more frequent and direct communications between the county and the engineer. We've established quality standards for the county's feedback to the engineer regarding issues and we're establishing expectations for when the engineer will provide a revised package. These solutions help create a more collaborative culture on behalf of all the stakeholders within the process. The results have been exciting. Since we've implemented, we've reduced the overall process lead time from 117 days to 59 days on average. While county personnel are responding, more, excuse me, while county personnel are expending more effort on the front end of the process, the results have seen a significant drop in the number of review cycles during the course of the approval, thereby giving us a quicker time for approval. Though it wasn't easy, we are excited by the journey that our team took and we are ecstatic by the results that we have achieved. Thank you.
Commissioner Pritchett.
Good job. I'm hearing already some good things about people that are coming to get their plans approved and I'm really excited about this and I hope you move on to the next project and you're able to do some more work on making the process faster and cutting costs. I love this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Barfield.
I'd like to echo that. It's interesting, before, let's see, last year when the impact fees were reinstated, I had so many developers talking to me, "Well, there's no way you guys can get this done in time. No way. It's not going, you're not going to get it done in time." Well, a few of them have talked to me now and said, "We're amazed that it works, that it got down." So, congratulations on that. And I agree with Commissioner Pritchett. What next? Let's move on. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I can tell you also that in my two and a half years in this job, that we've come light years in getting the process moving along and making developers and builders a lot happier. And, you know, it's refreshing to hear those people praising our county government. So, thank you.
That's great. And we'd also like to thank our team.
Excellent. Good job. Mr. Witten, anything else?
Mr. Chair, just, I know we're going to talk about, I think we're going to talk about Lean Six and the budget workshop, but in, you know, and again, thank them because they were, they were the first in the box and you all know how significant it is for developers to have a review process that's gone from 117 days to 59 days. We have 21 active projects. Lean Six Sigma is a, is a, an initiative that allows us to supply staff with tools to look for ways and gain efficiencies. And so, just to give you a sense of the other projects, it's a shelter worker program, fire rescue fleet service project, the agenda development process, grant management, the HR hiring process, ALS versus BLS, triage and emergency management, contract process, construction contract process, community supervision, ag and extension. We have watershed project monitoring, site construction process, homeowners' construction process, the purchasing process, and even pay stub process optimization. And so, across the board, county staff are doing Lean Six Sigma projects that hopefully will have the same return on investment as the development application process. That's it for me, Mr. Chair.
And I would just like to thank you for being the motivator behind Lean Six Sigma. It's been a pet project of yours and it's paid large, large dividends. So, the county is indebted to you, sir. Mr. Knox?
I have no report, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Barfield.
Well, I'd just like to, again, thank you, Stockton. Thank you for all you've done and all you will do. Fortunately, you are in the county and you will be serving our educational system, which is great too. But we just appreciate everything you've done for this county.
Commissioner Tobias.
No reports, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Isnardi.
I just want to thank you for your service as much as it's been great. You've been accessible and, you know, I can pick up the phone and call you and if you don't answer right away, you're quick to call me back. And I just appreciate that openness that you had with me for the short time you're here and even enjoyed our side conversations as we sat up here and discussed non-county business. But you're very well respected among the people that you served and your hundreds of employees and I wish you well.
Commissioner Pritchett.
We still have you for one more zone meeting, right? Okay. Two meetings, yeah, because of workshops. You are a wonderful county manager. I hope we find one anywhere near as good as you. And the respect that your staff has for you and how much they love you speaks volumes. So, good job, sir.
Commissioner Smith. My report, I have no report, but again, I would like to just reiterate what everybody has already said about Mr. Witten, all the good things. And he's been a big, big help to me in the two and a half years I've been here. And even when I was a candidate, he was always accessible and gave me a lot of information, which was extremely important because as a candidate, I didn't know squat. And it's amazing how much institutional knowledge this gentleman has. And so, you know, it was baby steps because I'm not the quickest learner, but he eventually wound up pounding it through my head, what things that I needed to know. So, I want to, thank you. This meeting is adjourned.
The opinions expressed by any member of the public during any period of public comment do not necessarily reflect the views or opinions of the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, Space Coast Government Television, or the program sponsor and are solely those of the presenter. The Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, Space Coast Government Television, and the program sponsor hereby expressly disclaim any and all responsibility or liability for any defamatory or slanderous statements expressed by any member of the public during any such period.